Welcome to Ask to Know. Y'all ready for this amazing forum? Where the young people get to have a voice in this election. First of all, I want to thank you all for coming. It's really important to me. I've always believed that it's just essential to give young people a voice in elections, right? Do we agree?
Yeah.
And we always forget that we have so much power on a local level. We always think, "Oh, you gotta vote for president," but it's so important, like, right here. And so, this forum is very close to me. And what's funny is that last night, I was covering the Democratic presidential debate with Hillary Clinton and Bernie Sanders. And then I flew out, literally, this left before this morning, to be here, because this is like my baby. I started it four years ago, when actually when Nancy Goldberg and Laura Chardier won that election. So you've actually come full circle with tonight's election, because those are the two seats that will be vacant. So anyway, so thank you for being here. Thank you to the candidates for running. Thank you for pizza. They provided all the pizza for you guys. We had Matthew Seeburger and Jim Clark provide much of the water that you had today. It's a very grassroots organization that I've started. And we need to thank the most amazing teacher, right? Genevieve Gilbert-Rolf for...
Yeah!
She has, like, been here with me since the beginning. And if it were not for her, and, you know, being a teacher and having so much love and passion, you all wouldn't be here, because I wouldn't know how to get the information to you. So it's really, I can hold a space, but I can't get you here without somebody like that caring enough to tell you about it and workshop questions with you guys. So that really means a lot. I want to thank West LA College for, once again, giving us this beautiful auditorium. It's always a pleasure to be here. And I want to introduce to you, the president interim right now is Robert Sprague, and he would just like to say hi.
Well, thank you very much, and great comments, and gives me another insight into this great event. I want to applaud you for it. It does remind me of last night, although I wasn't present for it. But it was an exciting thing to observe, and this is going to be also. I look forward to standing in the back, at least for a little while, to, what is it called? Listen and learn, or ask and learn, or ask to learn? And actually gain some more information. So, as was said, I'm Bob Sprague. I'm the interim president at West. We welcome doing almost any kind of projects that are cooperative with the city of Culver City, and certainly with the schools, and with the Board of Trustees. We're very happy to be the host, and we look forward to doing it again and again. We'll tell you just a couple of things. In maybe 12 months, maybe eight months, this floor will actually be able to allow dancers on it, and we're going to be able to have real dance performances, well as music performances on this stage for this recital hall. That'll be a big thing for us, because dancers right now, you can't see it from where you're seated, but there are all sorts of dangerous traps in this floor that make it almost impossible for a dancer. So that's going to happen. We're going to have breaking ground on the last buildings that the campus is going to build of TLC, a teaching learning center, that is going to have computers on almost every floor, four floors high, and a soundstage for motion picture and television. I think the two things I want to share with this group is that probably by November, we're going to be able to have open houses that show the relationships between math and science and robotics, and have little robots that we can engage along with other institutions and schools, Culver City's schools, to come and have open house experiences with STEM-related experiences with math and science and robots. And the same thing applies for the combination of motion picture television production and drones. Our aviation maintenance technology program is going to start one or two classes in how to maintain and repair drones. And just this week, earlier this week, there was an article in the LA Times about the biggest user of drones so far has been Hollywood. And the expansion of the uses in Hollywood of drones makes us think that the combination of motion picture television production and drones is a perfect one to exploit, and again to invite children and classes from Culver City schools to engage with STEM-related disciplines as they apply to the physics and the math of carrying a camera, and lowering it, and raising it, and delivering things that Hollywood is using drones for now. So those are two things that we're going to be doing that are open houses. I'll be in touch with the Culver City Board, and as well as with the superintendent about the ability to schedule classes to come up and engage with those two areas. And again, just to repeat, welcome to West. We're happy to have you. We look forward to doing it again and again, and look forward to listening to some very interesting exchange now. Thank you again.
One last thing. I now want to introduce Jamie Wallace, who I guess co-founded Backpack for Kids. And I always believe that to whom much is given, much is expected. And so, we have this food drive for the kids that are, you know, not as, I guess, who are a little bit more in need. And so, they collect a cup of noodle soup and beef stew, so I just want to let her talk to you real quick about that.
Hey, I'll keep, I'll keep it short, which I am. Just wanted to let you guys know that in the Culver City School District, we have about almost 40% of our kids on free and reduced lunch, which means that their income is low enough that they are entitled to free and reduced lunch. At this point, we've got about 90 families that are identified as not having food on the weekend. So that's what this program's all about. We collect food, and we give it in backpacks to the kids at every single school site in the district, from the preschool all the way to the continuation school. So if anyone would like a flyer, we would love any of these food items. You can drop them off at the middle school. We will be having food drives at each of the schools just before the winter break. And if anyone wants to give us money, that's even nicer, because we have to buy anything that we don't get. So I'll have these in back, and I'll let you get on with the evening. Thank you.
And one last thing. So I started this organization called Kid Scoop Media. We go to the White House once every eight weeks, perhaps. We've interviewed the president, the vice president. We're always looking for kids. I take, I take, I took them to the, to the debate last night. I took them to the Republican debate. If you guys are interested, please see me, and we'll get you that information. And now I want to introduce the moderators. We have Lauren, who, a senior, right?
Yes.
And we have Justin, the two moderators, and we have Ava. Where are you? Ava's doing the time. And I'll introduce the candidates. Okay, so we have first, in alphabetical order, we have Ann Burke. We have Dr. Kelly Kent. And Scott McVarysh.
Hello, hello, hello.
All right, so you guys are taking it over now, okay?
Sounds good. Awesome. Shout out to all the Culver City High School students out in the audience. Yeah, let's go. Also, shout out to the candidates up here. You guys look great. Cheers to the night's gonna go. We are gonna give you two minutes each to introduce yourselves. Tell us a little about yourself. We will then continue to ask the audience questions. They have prepared some questions for you guys. You will each have one minute to answer. After the questions we have prepared, there will be a 15-second lightning round, where you will only have 15 seconds to answer. So Ava will be your timer, so she is gonna hold up cards, so you guys know how much time is left. So yeah, so let's give you guys some time to introduce yourselves, starting with Mrs. Burke. You have two minutes.
All right. Hi, I'm Ann. Gonna talk down here, I guess. I am running for school board. I have two children in the schools here. I have a son who's 10 and a daughter who is seven. They're in elementary school. I am the oldest of nine children in my family, which means that I'm used to being in charge, but I'm also very used to having things thrown at me and being locked out of rooms from my other siblings. I am a first-generation college student. I was the first one to attend and then graduate, a four-years college. And then I had two other siblings that followed suit after me. I studied at the University of Massachusetts in Amherst. I'm actually from Boston. I do love the Dodgers and the Kings, but at heart, I love the Patriots and the Red Sox. I know, I knew that was gonna be a tough one. But I did study English and computer science there. It was at a time when high tech was very popular, so there weren't many people going into that field at the time. It was very popular, so I was fortunate enough to get a high-tech job right away. In my free time, I am on the Board of Directors of Little League. I'm very passionate about baseball, and I like music, and I sing. I sing in a community choir here called the Angel City Corral. So if you want, you can come listen to us sing. That's a little bit about me. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Can you sing a little bit for us? Is that, no, I'm just kidding.
Where are you now that I need ya?
All right. Awesome. Next, we'll have Mr. McVarysh. You have two minutes.
Okay. Hello, everyone. So who here went to Culver City Elementary Schools? Raise your hand. Who currently goes to Culver City Elementary Schools? All right. There's my daughter raising her hand. All right, so I have a daughter who goes to an elementary school here at El Marino. She'll be entering middle school next year. And that's really why I'm running for school board. When you have family connection, like all three of us do, it really motivates you to stop complaining about schools, stop thinking you've got great ideas for the schools, and actually try to do something about it. When I was a kid, probably ranging from six years old to probably 17, I used to read a lot of science fiction. I used to be very focused on the future. I really thought by the time I was this old, I would have a flying car. There is no flying car yet, but there are schools like UCLA, like West LA, that have very, very sharp focus on the future. That's what I want to bring to our schools. Traditionally, public schools, like high schools, oftentimes are teaching things that are a little bit in the past. They don't have robotics class. They don't have coding class. We're beginning to see some of that at Culver High School, absolutely, but I want to push it even further. I want our kids who graduate from Culver High School to be the ones who are getting the amazing jobs in tech industries here at Cementech, here at a few other major employers, Google, SpaceX. I want our kids to be the engineers. I want our kids to finally build me a flying car. So now you know my motive. I'm an attorney, and I feel like I do have some good ideas, and I'm looking forward to talking about them for the rest of today with your answer, with your questions. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. McVarysh. And finally, we have Dr. Kent. You have two minutes.
Hi, I'm Kelly Kent. And what I'm gonna do is tell you two things about me that make me different from my opponents. So the first one is that I've spent a really long time getting an understanding for how we best learn. And I'm just gonna pose a question to you that I think will help us walk through it. I want you to think back to your academic experience and remember what the most memorable academic moments were. So when you were learning, but a time that you can look back on now and say, "You know what? I actually did learn a lot. I remember that material, and it's gonna mean something to me going forward." And I'd like to guess that, one, you were working on a project with a peer, or a friend, or a classmate, or a teacher that you cared about. Two, you were working on a project that meant something personally to you. It was meaningful because it related to your family. It was meaningful because it related to a relationship that you're in, or you thought it would make a difference in the world, and so you connected with it. Or, three, this was a project that involved art and music as a part of the academic content. Those are three components of learning that contribute such essential meaning that students then retain that material and are able to use it in their real lives. And I want to bring more of all three of those things, things that inspire creativity, things that inspire working with the people that we can learn from, the best, our peers, and, and what was the second thing that I said? I forget the other one, but it was...
It was about memory.
There's another good thing about me that makes me different, which is that I'm a teacher. I've been learning about the brain for the past 10 years. I have a child at Lynn How. I've been on Parks and Recreation, because learning doesn't end at the end of the school day. I've been on the Commission for Parks and Recreation with Culver City. Learning doesn't begin at the beginning of the school day. It doesn't end at the end of the school day, and what goes on outside of the classroom is also really important, and I've been devoting my time to that for a long time. And the importance of having a child at Lynn How means that I am reminded that every single school in this district needs a voice, and I'm gonna be very committed to making sure that every perspective in the Culver City community is heard on the school board. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Kent.
Thank you so much for those introductions. For our first question, we have Carter, who's gonna do a 15-second lightning round. You will each have 15 seconds to respond to this question. Yeah, for his question.
Is there a particular order?
Yes, we'll start with Doc, we'll start with Mr. McVarysh.
All right. 15 seconds.
My name is Carter Coffey. I come from Culver Middle School. And my question is, which historical figure would you most like to meet, and why?
Abraham Lincoln, without a doubt. He held our country together when part of the country had horrible ideas about slavery and started to kill other parts of our country. He held it together. He won the war, and he created some amazing legacies for our country to follow.
Thank you, Mr. McVarysh. Dr. Kent?
Mark Twain, because he's really smart, but also really funny, and doesn't have a problem making fun of people, but with good intent.
Rosa Parks, because I want to know and me, why an average person like you or I became extraordinary in our world through her simple acts that she performed in her lifetime.
Thank you so much. You'll now be moving on to one-minute responses. You each have one minute. We'll be starting with Mrs. Burke, and then Dr. Kent, and then Mr. McVarysh. So our first question is from Viri Diana Hernandez.
Prisons are air-conditioning, yet we don't have air-conditioning in our classrooms. With temperatures reaching into the 90s, this is a huge issue. What do you plan to do to fix this, and how will you work it into the budget?
So I was part of the bond campaign committee a few years ago that was very instrumental in passing this bond, this health and safety bond for the schools. So I know all about the needs of air-conditioning and air filtration in the schools, and I've already been part of the process with the district and the administrators to figure out how we can move forward that quickly. I have already been talking to the district administrators on how, what the assessments are, and how we're gonna push that air conditioning in. So what we're gonna start with, then, is just how we can also get them in faster, because we know you want them now. So I want to go up to the Sacramento with the board's approval, and be able to talk to the State Department, figure out how we can go from these really long waits, which sometimes we have no control over, to shorter waits, so that we can say it's really hot. Or invite them down to sit in your classroom with you one day, and then we can figure it out.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Dr. Kent, you have one minute.
So who wants air conditioning in every classroom? Who wants really clean, functioning bathrooms all year long? So that's kind of a difficult position to be in, because air conditioning in every single classroom is an enormous Herculean amount of money, right? We actually have a lot of money with the bond. We have enough money to buy all of the hardware. Believe it or not, we can afford to do that. What we don't know how to buy is the energy. And energy costs come from the general fund, which is the fund that pays for your teachers, and your curriculum, and your books, and your instruction, and all of the really important educational materials. So we have to be creative. We cannot act hastily. We need to think about the long-term impact of removing hundreds of thousands of dollars from our educational funds that are our general fund, and putting them into short-term air conditioning solutions. Creative solutions might include energy savings through more solar panels that would then boost our educational funding sources. So I'd like to think about the long term for air conditioning as much as we are so desperate, and I feel that pain.
Thank you, Dr. Kent. Mr. McVarysh, you have one minute.
Air conditions are no longer an option, an option not to have. We absolutely have to have air conditioning in the classroom. It's both a safety for a work issue for teachers and staff, but it's also for kids. Those classrooms are so hot right now. Who feels like they're really able to learn in your absolute best manner at 12 o'clock and at 1:00 PM with that heat? So we're actually losing time in the classrooms from the heat. So at that point, if it becomes essential, we absolutely need to put air conditioning in. Now, central air conditioning is incredibly expensive. I'll grant that. It's not gonna be viable for all of the schools, but certainly, at the very least, good window units, which cost $500 to $600 to put in, are, is a very good solution right now, and the district has done that to over about 60% of the classrooms. So that is what we need to do immediately, so that we can get the air lower in every single classroom in the district.
Thank you, Mr. McVarysh.
Okay, for your next question, it will be Dr. Kent, Mr. McVarysh, and then Ms. Burke. We have Florin Amala for the next question.
With temperatures in the 90s, why are PE classes not canceled? Why are the water fountains turned off or out of order? And why must we pay a dollar for water?
So I'm sorry to hear that. I get concerned when my daughter has PE outside when the temperatures are that high. So if it's already that much of a concern for you guys, it needs to be brought up at the school board meetings. I've heard a lot of heat complaints at the school board meetings. I haven't heard directly complaints about PE. So that is something that needs to be addressed. I also thought that all the water fountains were taken care of. That was Nancy Goldberg's baby. What do I misunderstand? They're not working? This is also very disappointing to me. And as someone who wants to champion sustainability on the board, I feel very strongly about water, so I will look into it.
Thank you, Dr. Kent. Mr. McVarysh?
I think this is an area you need some creative solutions on. It's not gonna get cooler. The next five, 10 years, it's gonna get hotter. We're gonna have more heat waves like this, and we need to have long-term solutions. We have to rethink PE. On hot days like this, I'd much rather see a giant yoga class in the auditorium than I would kids running around the track. In terms of the waters, that's, if the, if the school's unable to provide water out of the fountains for free, then those bottles of water should not cost money. So it's up to the school to provide free water to kids. If they can't do it through the fountains, and until they fix the fountains, the bottled water should be free. And, you know, I get big sparkling bottles at my home, and you could have little cups. That could be an option, too, because having bottles like this are not good, especially if you have to pay a dollar, and it's also an absolute waste of plastic. So I'd like to see large sparkling bottles, and it's free if the fountains are not working.
Thank you, Mr. McVarysh. Ms. Burke, you have one minute.
I agree that water for a dollar is a little unreasonable, and so the hydration stations have to be fixed. I have been aware that some of them haven't been working, and the reasons have varied, whether it's, you know, it's so warm that there's been electrical outages. So there are people actually looking into that right now, why those are not working. As far as PE is concerned, in 90 degrees, I mean, it would be great if we weren't in a drought, and we could figure out how to have, like, water balloon fight PE classes. That would probably solve a lot of the heat issues for all of us. But I don't see that class happening just yet, so I don't think it's gonna pass through. I'll let that one go. So in the meantime, then, it's again, going back to the air quality and the air filtration, and making sure things like if you're using PE time in the gyms, that those spaces are air-conditioned, or at a safe air temperature for PE. If that doesn't work, then everyone can just pour water on them and say, "This is how we're doing PE," to the PE teacher.
Thank you, Ms. Burke.
Next, we have a question from Isabella Browning. And this question will go Mr. McVarysh, Dr. Kent, and then Ms. Burke.
So the school board is meant to address the needs of both students and teachers. What experience do you have in education that would allow you to fulfill both of these job requirements?
Great question, Isabella. So I've got two experiences relevant. One is for 10 years, I worked with teachers to help improve their working conditions. I did that in a number of different districts, and we would, I would help the teachers negotiate to make things better in their classrooms. I have read over literally hundreds, and if not thousands, of survey responses from teachers telling us exactly what they need to make their classrooms better and more easily teachable. In terms of the students, a few years ago, I helped co-found a group called the United Parents of Culver City. And that group was created in a response that we were feeling that sometimes the students' agenda was not being heard because of the adult agenda. And so, we worked with parents of those students to make sure that all of the voices, all of the concerns of students and parents were being heard and being brought into the debate. And we did that very well then, and that's one of the things that helped create the bond, to improve the safety and health of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McVarysh. Dr. Kent?
So I am a teacher, which is important, because we will be losing educators from the board this November. So I've been a teacher for a few years. I teach at Community College up in Moore Park in Simi Valley. I teach neuroscience and their psychology department, and I teach at a graduate school as well. And it is a unique experience set, because I know what it's like to be on stage in front of an audience all day long, and how hard that can be, and to feel the pressure to perform to such an important population. But also, I was adjunct faculty, so that's important, because I understand what teachers have to think about in terms of income. And then, I also train teachers. So I have a professional development company. It's an educational consulting company. And so, I train teachers, but I also train them on how to reach their students best. It's brain-based professional development. So from what we know about how a brain develops and how it best learns, how can teachers incorporate that into their lesson plans and curriculum?
Thank you, Dr. Kent. Ms. Burke?
I got my second master's degree from Loyola Marymount University School of Education in Counseling. And so during that time, about 50% of the graduate students that I was with were teachers. So I was able to get, have frank dialogue and conversation with many of the teachers there on what worked and what didn't work. I've also served as an SAT tutor, and I've tutored children and done some educational counseling. And also, in case you didn't know, I have the endorsement of the Culver City Federation of Teachers. So I know many of your teachers here, and they have put their trust in me to be on the school board.
Thank you, Ms. Burke.
Next, we have Dana Chung. The order will be Ms. Burke, Dr. Kent, and then Mr. McVarysh.
So we have this rare opportunity tonight to tell you about some of the problems at our schools. What will you do to improve communication between the students and the school, and the school board on an ongoing basis?
I know that we have a couple of student reps that are part of our school board, and we want to sort of open that up more, so that there's more time for the students. I know that when I've attended many, 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 many school board meetings, I know that sometimes the reports they give are, are quick, and they might feel afraid. We want to be able to also, instead of just having the students come to the school board meetings, school board members reach out also to students to get more frank, open conversation. Have also maybe a portal to figure out, how can you guys submit questions on an ongoing basis in real time? Which in today's technology, we should be able to do in so many ways, whether it's Twitter, or whatever it is. There should be a social media aspect, where you guys can funnel questions in anonymously, if need be, so that they can be honest questions that the school board can address.
So yeah, I kind of have a bee in my bonnet about this communication question, so I like that we've been asked. You know, school board works their butt off, so, you know, they are busy and commendable individuals, and the administration as well, but there really has to be a better job of communicating with the students and with the other stakeholders, because we have so many questions. So many questions about bond spending, so many questions about AP books, you know, being super crappy and falling apart, so many questions about why are we in school in 99-degree rooms? And those questions are not being answered, right? I'm sure you're asking your teacher, and you're complaining at home and to your teacher, but there's no one who acts really in charge, coming to you and explaining. And they can, because they do have the answer. They do know why we don't have new turf at Lynn How, or why we don't have new turf at El Marino that was supposed to come this summer, or what's going on with Robert Frost, or why we bought air conditioners, but they're not working well. Those answers are there, and we need to figure out an email system. We need to have more announcements going on in the school, maybe more reps coming back and forth, you know, as mediators between the school board and the students. Sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Kent. Mr. McVarysh?
So, let me tell you a little bit about power. Power is the way you get noticed. The people who have power are those who have organized themselves. So, when students want to be heard, they can speak individually, or they can organize themselves into a group and demand to be heard. I, I can't tell you how outrageous I find it that your drinking fountains are not working. That's just wrong. And I, there shouldn't be one student coming to a school board forum like this, though I commend that student for doing that, and asking about that. There should be fifty students demanding that the water fountains work. Every change in our society has always come by people organizing themselves and demanding that things be fixed or that things improve. So, that's what I would encourage the students to do. Learn that lesson now, because that is the best way to make changes.
Thank you, Mr. McVarysh.
You're welcome, teachers. Blame it on him.
Next, we have a question from Randy Lozaro. The order will be Dr. Kent, Mr. McVarysh, and then Ms. Burke.
Throughout my high school career, I've noticed that the beginning of the school year has been pushed back to mid, end of August. What is the reason for this, and are the supposed benefits of this greater than the price we are paying for in heat, in heat exhaustion?
The start of the school is earlier in August, is that what you're saying? I didn't hear you totally.
Late in August, later in August.
Could you repeat the question?
So, throughout my high school career, I've noticed that the beginning of the school year has been pushed up to the middle of August. What is the reason for this, and are the supposed benefits of this greater than the price we are paying in the heat exhaustion?
So, I just want to address the heat exhaustion. My, my school year, since I've been here, has gotten earlier, but, you know, this question of how to deal with the heat is, is not, it's, I wish it could be solved by answering calendar questions, and it just can't, right? Because we've even been talking about minimum days at school board meetings, and then what would happen if you had minimum days in August, but then you were going to make up for them in June, which is liable to be hot as well, right? Climate change is here. And so, we have to be much more creative than, than finding answers to heat in the calendar. And I just want to come back to the idea of getting solar panels on more than one campus as a way to address an immediate need for more energy capacity for the school without taking away from having more teachers and smaller classrooms and less body heat in the classroom.
Thank you, Dr. Kent. Mr. McVarysh?
Back when I was a student, school always started around the second week of September. And the reason I remember that is my birthday, September eighth, and I can't tell you how many years my birthday fell on the first day of school. Now, it seems like by the time my birthday rolls around, it's already week three or week four of school. Let me explain why that is, and I'm not sure if I have all the answers to help fix that. It's mostly because of the advanced placement classes. Schools and districts want their kids to pass advanced placement classes in high school, and they want, and everybody takes the test on the same day, so they're trying to give them as much time to study as possible. I believe that has been the main motive for starting class in August instead of on my birthday. The big problem with that is the heat, and that's when you get back to air conditioning. World's not getting colder, it's getting hotter. The demand for colder air is just imperative, and it's going to get worse, so we need to treat it with air conditioning.
Thank you, Mr. McVarysh. Ms. Burke?
My understanding for the calendaring is similar. It's in part due to the AP exams and when they, where they fall, so they try to accommodate more instructional time to give students for that. It is hot in September and October. I agree with both candidates. Unfortunately, the heat is here to stay, I think, for our, you know, future. But I want to also consider the idea of this, and hear me out before you think, you don't like it, is maybe year-round schools. And I went to a year-round school in England for a long time, and we had bigger breaks around the holidays, and we did have a big break in the summer, but we were able to be more creative with our scheduling when it did have these hot days. And then you didn't have to worry about maybe just finding a summer job for two months, which is near impossible to find, or find a bunch of camps for three, you know, six weeks for your children. So, with the year-round schools, if the society can get behind that, you can be more creative and flexible with your scheduling, and also with things like this, where we have the heat.
Thank you, Ms. Burke.
Next, we have Julisa Zamaro. The order will be Mr. McVarysh, Ms. Burke, then Dr. Kent. Actually, this will be Rima Alguazari reading the question.
Science has shown that the circadian rhythms of our brains shift during our teen years so that we fall asleep around eleven PM, and we need eight to nine hours of sleep to be healthy and ready to learn. Combining science and math, then, high school should begin at nine AM. Are you prepared to accept and implement these conclusions?
Yes. That's actually true information, and when I did my master's work in LMU, that was actually clinical evidence of that, especially at an older teenage age group, that you actually do need more sleep. I am also a part of United Parents. I was also one of the co-founders of that group. And our Student Wellness Committee that I was a part of talked about this, and there are teachers in this district who support this and who are pushing for that as well, that you guys do need more sleep, and that maybe going to school quite that early isn't the best thing for you academically, or mentally, or physically.
So, we have a school board member named Steve Levin, who's a good friend of mine. He was elected two years ago. Steve and I talked about this when he was running for school board two years ago. The science perhaps was not as conclusive as it is now. It seems like it's pretty incredibly conclusive that a later start in the school day is better for high school students. Unless I saw evidence to the contrary, I would absolutely be in favor of starting school later. Nine AM does seem reasonable. I know Casey Chabola, who probably some of you know from having him as a teacher, that's right, he's also in favor of that. And ultimately, I think that's the way we're going to have to go, certainly for the high school. I would have to see the evidence for the middle school, but unfortunately for elementary school, it's not quite like that, so they get to keep starting early. Yeah, so, but yes, definitely in favor of starting later for the high school. Also, by the way, it shows that that is the number-one thing you could do to improve test scores on, at high school level, is to, in fact, start the school day later. So, it works on all levels.
It's also really good for happiness. Yeah, so, I mean, it, it can, it, it can't be a black-and-white issue, because if it were black-and-white, we would have done it by now, okay? Because we have been talking about it for some time. So, what's complicated about it are extracurriculars and teachers and so forth. So, those things have to be considered. I think creative solutions do exist. Some students can go to a zero period, some students can go to a one period. It can depend, depend on your involvement at the time, what season you're in, what athletic commitments you have, what AVPA commitments you have. And then the other question is teachers, and maybe we can be creative with teachers as well. Maybe some teachers, and it could relate to seniority, it could relate to desire. We'd have to think about it carefully and make sure that everyone came to the table to talk about what their vision would look like. And so, perhaps, senior teachers would choose to come in earlier, because that's a preferable schedule for them, and newer teachers would come in for the one period.
Thank you, Dr. Kent. We now have a question from Carly Zimmerman. The order will be Dr. Kent, Ms. Burke, and then Mr. McVarysh, sorry.
Good evening. Many high school students are struggling and frustrated with Common Core math, and especially the LMU method of teaching it. The funding for the LMU program is due to expire. Will you vote to dump the math component of Common Core or find a better way to teach it?
Dr. Kent?
So, I think, oh, okay, so, there's quite a few of you who are, have an investment in this question. Okay, so, that's important. And, and I just want to say that what I understand to be the most difficult about Common Core is that there are students who have learned the old-fashioned way for, you know, nine years of their schooling career, and then are all of a sudden expected to make this radical shift. And that's the population on which this is having the biggest impact and the hardest to adjust to. So, I understand that, and I wish we could have phased Common Core in. That would have been the long-term vision. I, I don't work at the state level, that's not what happened, and there isn't going back. And Common Core has a lot of incredible things that it gives us. It really teaches students to be critical thinkers and be able to work in today's world, and to be creative, and to work in collaborative environments. And Common Core math, it's not dictated, so the LMU method may not be great. I'd like to consider it. I've also seen CGI. I, I know there's math coaches at all the schools now. I know that we are being creative and innovative, and that means that it's a moving target, and we can look at what might be better.
Thank you, Dr. Kent. Ms. Burke?
Did I say I went to LMU? I meant USC. I didn't go to LMU. I think, I agree with Dr. Kent here in that it is unfortunate that we, none of us here were part of that process of how to implement the Common Core. And so, I do agree that it should have been phased in and staggered in for some of the older students and versus the elementary school students. We're here now, so hopefully what we can do as school board members in the future, though, is talk to Sacramento, talk to our legislators about, have a more voice in saying, "Here's what we're hearing from students. We, we need to rethink this, because it's not working, and it's not really making their high school time very much fun, or academically beneficial for them."
Stand up if you like the LMU math method. If you like it. Okay. Stand up if you don't like it. Okay.
Again, I went to USC.
And I went to UCLA. Thank you for standing up. So, this, this is a very good example. With one person coming to a school board member, we think, "All right, well, maybe this person's got a problem with math." When all of a sudden forty people stand up in the room, that is what I was talking about earlier. The forty people here who don't like LMU math have to organize to make sure people are listening to you, because LMU, Common Core is so new that perhaps the LMU method overlooked something. And the people who designed it, the people who are implementing it, overlooked something. They need to hear from you in a group situation that there's a problem, folks. There's a problem, and we need to have it resolved. Until you have that discussion, though, nothing's going to change.
Thank you, Mr. McVarysh.
Next, we have Olivia Brush. It will be Ms. Burke, Mr. McVarysh, and then Dr. Kent.
Please ask me about pizza.
Sorry. Many students feel the math department has many flaws. Teachers, teachers assume students know the material, and any difficulties will be solved by the students themselves. How will you change the system so students have a stronger basis in math?
I love this revolution that Mr. McVarysh has started. All right. Well, now, we're clearly hearing that there is some, there's some concerns from the students with the math that's going on. So, I think, then, if that's the teachers that need to have a dialogue with the school board members, and it's good to hear from you, and it's good to hear from the students that are talking about this, so that we know this. I don't know if, maybe the school board members haven't heard that directly yet, and so, once they do, we can have that frank conversation with the teachers. It's unfortunate if there's an expectation of knowledge the students are supposed to have, and you go into a class and you don't have it. So, that starts from an earlier part. So, we need to make sure that each grade, leading up to that, there is a standard or a proficiency that is met in those core components of mathematics. If it's not, then we need to have a solution to figure out, how do we make sure they are, without it just being expected of them?
Thank you. Mr. McVarysh?
I believe, if I'm elected on November third, I believe my first duty at school board will be in December. So, this is what I will tell you, that in January, I would like to have a forum at the high school, and at the math school, at the middle school, if the problem goes down to the middle school. But I'd like to have a forum for the students to air their concerns about the math. I will be there as a school board member. I will make sure that our excellent Assistant Superintendent of Ed Services is there as well, that the head of the math department, that the principal is there as well, so we can hear directly from the students' perspective. That's what happens when forty people stand up in a room. You're going to be heard. The forum is a great start for that, so your voices can be heard, because I can tell you this, the teachers want you to learn. They're not doing this punitively. If there's a problem, it's really not the teachers who are creating the problem, it's they're probably being given tools that aren't working, and they want to hear from you to make those tools work better.
Thank you, Mr. McVarysh. Dr. Kent?
So, I, I really want to make an impact on a teacher's ability to reach every student. And right now, many teachers are not able to reach many of their students, and partly that's because there are so many students in a classroom, right? And we may not be able to immediately make our class sizes smaller, but we can be very creative and provide many more resources to our teachers than we are right now. Some of my concerns, which are now being voiced here tonight, are that students are not comfortable raising their hand all the time and admitting that they don't have what they need to answer the current question. And there are ways to get at that. And we can provide more resources for the teachers and use innovative instructional methods in the classroom that will allow a teacher to get at all of the students, including the ones who are not going to admit that this is more challenging for them than they'd like to show in front of their peers, right? So, there are ways to address these issues by supporting the teachers, because it's absolutely not the case that they want to see anyone falling through the cracks.
Thank you, Dr. Kent.
Next, we'll have a question from Tora Ward. Lily Gardner will be asking the question instead. And the order will be Dr. Kent, Ms. Burke, and then Mr. McVarysh.
Learning a second language early in life increases learning ability as well as being useful throughout a child's life. Will you work to make, to make second language, second languages a reality at all of our elementary school sites?
Could you repeat that one more time?
Learning a second language early in life increases learning ability as well as being useful throughout a child's life. Will you work to make second languages a reality at all of our elementary school sites?
You guys are making me cry, because this is very near and dear to my heart, and I mean that in the most genuine way you can imagine. So, last year, at Lynn How, which is where my daughter goes to elementary school, I started a Spanish program there. It's now serving two hundred students. Last year, it was completely volunteer-run and administered. This year, we managed to raise money to get it funded, and we bought curriculum and so forth. It is such a passion for me. I believe in it strongly because of its contributions to the brain, but also because, come on, it's two thousand and fifteen. I think that we need language at El Rencon. I think that we need language at all of, every second grader. I mean, I'd start it in kindergarten, but I have to go a little bit slow. Every second grader should have a language, in my opinion, and we should be a language district. We are a great district, and people come here for language, but they should be able to get it at any school. We can't accommodate all of the people who want language at El Marino and La Bayona. And most of Lynn How families and El Rencon families and Faragut families would also be interested in language as well. So, for sure, I would be a champion on the board for that.
Thank you, Dr. Kent. Ms. Burke?
This is also a passion of mine as well. My, both my kids go to El Marino, so I invested in the second language right away. I wanted that for my children. Part of that was also because second language is in my home. My mother's from Thailand, but it was never taught to me, so I definitely sort of resent that. Yeah, I'm going to say that. I resent that a little bit now. I'm okay with that. So, I think it's important that we do have second languages, and it's offered across the board. I also just spent three weeks in Guadalajara on the Mexico exchange program with my son, and I don't speak Spanish. And let me tell you, it was tough. No me gusta. I did not understand much of what was going on there. And so, I really got to see the advantage he had to have that second language in his life.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Mr. McVarysh?
I do speak Spanish, and I know the value of it. I've traveled throughout Latin America, almost every country in Central America, numerous countries in South America, and throughout Los Angeles and Las Vegas and other parts of our country where Spanish is spoken. It is an amazing advantage to have a second language. I think that there are so many countries right now that just teach all of their kids two languages, that there's absolutely no reason why we can't do that. I would love to see a Mandarin program in one of the schools if parents wanted Mandarin. I would love to see a Mandarin program in one of the schools if parents wanted Mandarin, or Brazilian Portuguese, or perhaps just Spanish. But I absolutely believe we should have every single child grow up with a dual language. Because that's what the future is. The world is getting smaller. It is so much easier to communicate with people in other countries, to go to other countries than it was 50 years ago. But you're absolutely missing out if you can only speak one language.
Thank you, Mr. McVarysh.
We understand that it's getting late and if some of you need to leave, that's totally okay. But as you leave, please take out your trash. This is a rented space. Don't leave your trash here. Thank you. Next, we have Justin Parker. The order will be Ms. Burke, Mr. McVarysh, and then Dr. Kent.
So what will you do to introduce the world of technological careers to children at a young age to help spark their interest in that field? And continue that learning through coding classes in high school?
So like I mentioned, I actually went to college and studied computer science and English. And I thought it was very critical that we have high-tech programs in our schools. One of the things that I am proposing at these schools, not only the high school, but is Career Path Academies, which encourage students to take these tech classes. Because I worked at high-tech companies for 15 years before I decided to do more education-related business, I worked with many companies to talk about how we can get students in for mentorships, for internships. And bring those people in from those companies into the schools to do more instruction, to do more open houses. But at a middle school, high school level, and even probably like 5th grade, we can do more to bring students to those places and bring also the technology into the schools. There's really no reason in 2015 and 16 that most of us shouldn't be super tech savvy. I know most of you are probably super savvy with Snapchat, but beyond Snapchat, we can go further.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Mr. McVarysh?
So I too, along with Ms. Burke, are proposing high school academies, including a science, technology, and engineering academy. Our vision for that is to have a place that will be able to create concentrated learning on the subjects of science, technology, and engineering. To bring resources from the outside, and that would include mentorships, that would include clubs and competitions and guest speakers. And that will then go down and permeate the middle school and maybe even the elementary school with the high school tech academy being at the hub. We need something like that because we have an amazing opportunity. We're a part of Silicon Beach. We have SpaceX at our border, we have Google at our border, Cementec, third largest employer in all of Culver City, the incredible tech startups at Hayden Track. And we don't have enough relationships with any of them. That's what the tech academy at the high school will change. And everybody, all the way down to kindergartners, will benefit from that.
Thank you, Mr. McVarysh. Dr. Kent?
So yeah, I'm really interested in more IT availability. And I think that there's a systematic approach to take, which is that we need to reevaluate what college readiness is, right? Because currently, the district is not where it needs to be in terms of what it considers its college readiness classes, right? So I think that there are some classes that can be taken out and substituted with IT-related classes. I don't know if Algebra II is necessarily the perfect college readiness class, whereas some programming classes would absolutely be necessary. So we can reevaluate it from a systemic perspective and be a district that is much more contemporary than it is currently. And I wanna make another important point here, which is that I don't just wanna make the classes available, but I also want to make sure that certain students are steered toward them that typically would not be otherwise. So we do have a large population of students that are on subsidized lunch. And that's important because the track record is not good in the state or in the nation in terms of steering that population towards college-ready classes like IT classes. And so in particular, while making them available is urgent, making sure that the population that might not normally be geared towards them or steered towards them should be directed expressly to those classes that would enhance their ability to have a high income as adults.
Thank you, Dr. Kent.
Next, we have a question from Shoichi Murphy. And the order will be Mr. McVarysh, Dr. Kent, and then Ms. Burke.
Sho Murphy from Culver City High School. What will you do so that Centar Plus and the PAWS program at the middle school be brought in to include more elective options?
So, excellent. So Centar Plus is, for those of you who don't know, is a fairly recent program that is offering kids more options, particularly in the secondary. The problem the district faces is a, frankly, a lack of counselors who are able to juggle around schedules and give kids different options than they would have. Part of that solution, for instance, at the elementary school where we don't have Centar Plus, is to bring counselors in so that the counselors are able to give more options for kids. That means bringing in new classes that would then allow kids to have more options. Sometimes that's gonna mean having a zero period, for instance, at the high school, where we do have that right now. But then that means we're starting school earlier. So there's no easy solution for that. But ultimately, the only way you're gonna bring in more options for kids is if you increase funding for the variety of classes that are being taught. Thank you, Sho Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. McVarysh. Dr. Kent?
So what's cool about having this bond is that we get to make all of these capital improvements to our schools, and that's fantastic. But what's super exciting is that we get to decide how to spend that money. And here's where we can be creative. Because we need more teachers. And we need more counselors, and we need more classes, and we need to figure out how to accommodate all of the needs of the students. So I think we need to be creative with our bond spending so that we can put more money into our general fund pot and hire more teachers and take on more classes. And I think we need to do a better job of empowering the students to voice what classes they want. So that we can be clear that we are not just meeting the needs of what we thought public schools should look like, but what today's students think that public schools should look like.
Thank you, Dr. Kent. Ms. Burke?
So what probably most of you don't know is I actually created a new class at the school that the Centar Plus has access to, which is the dubstep class. So if you're not taking the dubstep and rapping class, I don't know how you didn't hear about it. But other than that, it's just more about getting more resources. But the more resources, as Mr. McVarysh pointed out, some of that's also gonna be a scheduling. So if you're already in this blocked schedule, what do you do? Now, if you do start earlier, but your new start time is nine, eight isn't so bad. So we can, again, talk about the scheduling, go back to the resources, figure out, and then also figure out what classes you want. Because I heard you want classes, options. But now we have to go back to the table and say, what classes do you want? Maybe you don't want my dubstep class. And that's cool.
Thank you, Ms. Burke.
Next, we have Jasani. The order will be Dr. Kent, Ms. Burke, and Mr. McVarysh.
Are you planning to make learning more fun?
Oh, I got that covered.
So I opened with it a little bit because I'm kind of on a mission in this way, which is that really, learning isn't gonna work if you're not engaged. And fun is, you know, your way of saying engaged, right? And so how do you get students engaged? Well, you can make it involve art and music. You can make it more creative. You can make it a project that they work on with their peers, because we really are social creatures. But also you make it relevant to the real world around you, okay? So you get your hands dirty, you make mistakes, you do experiments, but you do it in a way that makes you feel like you're making an impact. Like you made a sleeping bag out of a sweater for that homeless guy. Or you, you know, figured out how to solve some refugee crisis, even in your tiny microcosm that you built out of paper. But some way that you feel like you can actually save the world, make a difference, you know, make people happier and more fulfilled. It has to be applied and it has to make sense for what today's world looks like.
Thank you so much, Dr. Kent. Ms. Burke?
So in all of my work with education, one of the things I have been able to do, I've been to all of the schools here in our district. But I've also been able to visit more than about 30 schools, public and private, out of our district through my graduate work. And what I saw was a lot of different buildings and facilities. One of the things we can do with some of this bond money, as we think about restructuring our facilities, is create creative spaces for students. One of the things I sought to the schools was non-traditional classrooms. They were open-air, they called them think spaces for students. With comfortable furniture, giant floor-to-ceiling whiteboards where you could, magnetic whiteboards you can write on them. And that was your space to have discussions and to have lessons that weren't necessarily guided by teacher in the front, students sitting at a desk. This was also great for, what they pointed this out to is great for many older students, high schoolers, who aren't this tall anymore and don't wanna sit at a desk for seven hours. So your creative space then is a place where you can stand, you can sit comfortably, and have a more open-air learning environment.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Mr. McVarysh?
So I'm what you call a policy wonk. That means that I really have fun thinking and talking about policy. I'm guessing that's not what you guys mean when you ask the question, how to make education more fun. But because of that background, I have come to understand that there are different methods of teaching. Project-based learning is one of those. That kids can learn just as much, if not more, than a lecture, but instead they're learning it through the creation of projects. And these projects will teach the entire lesson from A through Z, finishing the project. Oftentimes, that means our teachers have to retool how they're teaching a particular unit, but that can be done. The second thing is, I see it every day with my daughter's homework. When there's worksheets being sent home, that really robs education of its fun. And so what's interesting is that there's a, pretty much a consensus among educators that homework at the early levels is not useful and does not work. I will be someone who will look at that research and listen and follow it if I agree with it.
Thank you, Mr. McVarysh.
We now have a very important question from Spencer Harrow. The order will be Ms. Burke, Mr. McVarysh, and then Dr. Kent.
It's about pizza, isn't it?
The lack of privacy dividers between urinals means that only every other urinal is used during passing periods when there's most use of bathrooms. Many of the stalls also lack doors and are effectively useless. This means that many students will try not to use the bathrooms as much as possible. What will you do to help improve bathrooms in our schools?
Can you read the question one more time, please?
The lack of privacy divided between urinals means that only every other urinal is used during passing periods when there is most use of the bathrooms. Many of the stalls also lack doors and are effectively useless. This means that many students will try not to use the bathroom as much as possible. What will you do to help improve bathrooms in our schools?
Considering I'm the only one who uses urinals, shouldn't I be the one to answer that first?
Nope. Because it just sounds like a lot of people are holding it at school. Not healthy, not healthy. Going back to what I just mentioned, my visits at a lot of these school sites, what I saw was one of the most genius things recently. And that was non-gender assigned bathrooms. So what it was, is they're not men's and women's or male and female bathrooms. What they are, just private stalls. And then there's an open, public wash area. So that got rid of a lot of what you're talking about. We don't need to have private dividers, because all the bathrooms are private stalls. And then the washing your hands area is just open. This is a brand-new concept for many of the schools. It definitely sort of solves like transgender issues as well, so you don't have to worry about it. And so even for adults, you go in and everyone has a private bathroom. So I think when we think about having bathrooms in our new buildings, if we're ever, if we're gonna upgrade them, which it sounds like we need to upgrade them, then we're gonna go into that sort of model, that sort of idea where it's, every bathroom is private, but the hand-washing area is open.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Mr. McVarysh, you're up.
Okay. So I remember in Santa Monica Pier, the urinals are just one big trough. There's no separate urinals. That seems as ridiculous as having no barriers between the urinals. Splashback if nothing else. Come on. This is insane. I, I'm appalled.
No one's standing?
I'm appalled. I think anybody who is designing that should be required to use them. And that the, all the men who designed it, the women can be spared this, all the men who designed it should all have to go to the bathroom at the same time. And see how that's working out for them. I would definitely listen to students. I love it when you're all standing up and making your voice heard together. And I don't wanna say I'm gonna be a champion on this issue, because I don't want that in the headlines. But it is absolutely something I would try to change immediately, and that's what bond money should be used for.
Thank you, Mr. McVarysh. Dr. Kent?
So yeah, it touches back on this issue of having to decide where we wanna spend our money, right? And there really is this long-term impact of bathrooms that affects learning for the whole year. Because all year long, you can't use the bathroom. I can't tell you door-to-door, every high school parent tells me that their kid doesn't go to the bathroom the entire day. And it's just unacceptable. And to me, that is a huge priority. And another area where we need to treat it with urgency, it has to be first on the list, but also can be a way that we can think long-term and sustainable. What's our water use look like in those bathrooms? If the toilets are not working, what does that mean about if water is running incessantly? What is our impact on the environment in those bathrooms? And we can use our bond funds to both address the urgent need to deal with the health and safety implications of not being able to use a bathroom, but also to think about what impact we're having on the climate in the long run.
Thank you, Dr. Kent. Alright, I have a question for you guys. If you could put a woman on the $10 bill, who would it be? Well, this is gonna be a lightning round, starting with Mr. McVarysh, and then Dr. Kent, and then Ms. Burke. And 15 seconds to answer. If you could put a woman on the $10 bill, who would it be? Mr. McVarysh?
I would say Eleanor Roosevelt. She helped keep our country together, especially when her husband, who was the president, found himself physically unable to carry out all the duties of his office. Held us through World War II and the Depression.
Dr. Kent?
I would say Barbara Kingsolver, because she's my favorite author, and she's a feminist, and she's an environmentalist, and she grows her own food.
Ms. Burke?
I'm gonna go back to Rosa Parks. Or me.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Leah Lara. She's from the middle school. She will be asking you one-minute questions. A one-minute question, not questions.
And before you ask, Ms. Burke, no, it's not about pizza. At the middle school, there are only a few hydration stations spread around the campus. The water at the regular water fountains is usually very warm and tastes like fish. There was only one last year at Farragut, for example. How are you going to add more hydration stations to each school in the unified school district?
That will come in with the bond money. No one likes fish water? Wow, shocking. The hydration stations were put in and they were sort of like, definitely kind of a test run. So now that we know they're, you know, well-received, and some of them are working, we're gonna hopefully be able to get more of those in and maybe remove some of the old-fashioned water fountains that aren't working and are kind of very germ-filtered. So we're gonna try to get more of those hydration stations in with that bond money and the changes to the facilities.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Dr. Kent?
So I guess this water thing is really, we have not made an impact with the hydration stations as much as we need to. And I think I know why. Because the recommendations are there. The Sustainability Committee exists. This is an advisory committee to the school board and to the district. And they have made the recommendations for hydration stations on all of the campuses. The reason they're not there yet is because there isn't the manpower to implement them. And I have a solution to that. Which is that we've saved hundreds of thousands of dollars in energy spending through the solar panels. And I think that the district now owes it to us to parlay that into a staff person who is a sustainability manager, whose job is to implement the recommendations that have the impact on our resources and our environment. And so if there were a staff person to oversee this, they would be able to direct, we need a hydration station, another one at Farragut, we need a couple more at the middle school. Otherwise, all of our district staff are overburdened and overtaxed.
Thank you, Dr. Kent. Mr. McVarysh?
We have $106 million to make improvements at our schools. We don't have that many schools. We don't have that many schools. The point here is that that is a lot of money that can go toward the schools that the students here study at every day. How do we prioritize things? Well, ultimately, we're going to be asking parents, we're going to be asking teachers, and what's clear to me from this forum is that we absolutely have to ask students, what are your priorities? Because you see it on the ground every day. You see it in the hallways, you see the problems, the hydra- not having enough hydration stations. We can have all the committees and the reports we want, but if we hear 100 students saying, "We're thirsty, we need more water, and fish water just doesn't cut it," that's how we get more hydration stations. So I will pledge that we absolutely will include students' voices when we set the priority in the next few months because the $106 million, we're going to be deciding it in December, January, February, and March of this year.
Thank you, Mr. McPharish.
The next question will be asked by Brainer.
Hello, I'm Brainer. Bathrooms are places that are meant to be sanitary. However, many of the bathrooms at the high school have issues such as includes no soap, stall doors missing, and rusted seats and handles. How will you give these issues the creative solution and the priority they deserve?
Dr. Kent, you're up.
So again, I know that this is not because the custodial staff doesn't like you, right? It's because the custodial staff is already very overburdened, and we need more custodial staff. And we need someone who's going to oversee that the purchasing is timely and that we have soap when we need soap and paper towels when we need paper towels. And so it's about the manpower. How do we get the manpower? We have $106 million in bond money, but that's not manpower money. We have to figure out how to spend the bond money in a way that puts educational funds into our general pool that we can spend on hiring personnel, hiring custodial staff in this case, and having someone who can oversee so that we can have implementation in a planned way, not a reactive, after-the-fact, it's-already-too-late way.
Ms. Burke?
Um, what I'm hearing is that we're already too late, we're after the fact. So again, it goes back to maybe creating, when we use, change and restructure our facilities and modernize them to the single stall, stall system, to air dryers, which are better for the environment and don't create paper towel waste. Also, someone has to fess up if you're the one dirtying the bathroom. Because some people, someone here is doing it then. And my son was guilty of it too, of throwing the wet paper towel on the ceiling, and he got in a little trouble, but we found out one person who was doing it. So it's taking some ownership of our schools. Ah, see? He called, he called you out. But then creating bathroom spaces, which would also be easier to maintain and to keep clean. And I think those type of modern type of style of bathrooms would be easier.
Mr. McPharish?
I, I think Brainer's point really goes to the overall idea of how are we going to prioritize the money? There are so many different demands. $106 million is a lot of money, but there's more than $106 million that we would need to implement everybody's plans. So when it comes down to the next six months, um, when we're making these decisions, it is just so vital that students' voices are heard because if not, parents and, um, adults will be making the decisions for you. They're going to do it in your best interest, but ultimately, they won't necessarily be informed. How many, how many parents, how many adults really know that there's a problem because the urinals, um, have no separation between them and there's no barrier? They don't know that unless the students tell them. How many, uh, parents know the conditions of those bathrooms without the soap? I doubt many parents are using the bathrooms at the high school. I'd hope not. So it's about students making their voices heard. Get organized and make your voice heard, not just at this forum, but over the course of the next year, is my recommendation.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have Zachary. The order will be Mr. McPharish, Dr. Kent, and Ms. Burke.
So, if you were to do something about the school lunch because some people think it is a bit unhealthy and they, and people need to make it better, what would you do about it?
Okay, so school lunch, I, this is an issue that's been going on in our district for a few years. Uh, I understand, again, because as an adult, I don't eat the school lunch, that our school lunch has improved, but clearly, from the amount of students standing up, it has not improved enough. Obviously, we need more, um, healthy food options. Uh, there are so much advancements now in preparing meals and cooking healthy, um, alternatives. Back when I was a student, uh, it was pretty much peanut butter and jelly sandwiches, um, and, uh, that was, that was pretty much it. That's all I think I liked. So now it's a matter of making sure, uh, the staff at the school who are in charge of the lunches really have that background and are being given that type of education so they know how to prepare those foods on a large scale. It is a difficult, um, it is a difficult, uh, operation to get all of the lunches at the schools. And if you don't have the background on how to make them healthy and delicious, they're not going to be healthy and delicious. So that means educating the, the staff and the adults involved.
Thank you, Mr. McPharish. Uh, Dr. Kent?
So, the Culver City Board of Education needs a champion of sustainability to address this question. And I have been making it my mission ever since I have been running this campaign to be a champion of sustainability on the board. And sustainability means a number of things. One of them is, what kind of landfill trash are we making with all of the packaged foods that we have in the schools? Another one of them is, how close to the source are these foods? How healthy are they? How whole are they? And it's, it's not looking good. The report card is not good. But one of the complicating factors is that we get federal funds. How do we address that we get federal funds that have restricted ways of spending? Well, it turns out we have lots of neighbors to look at. Guess what? Santa Monica's doing it. Santa Barbara's doing it. We have neighboring school districts that are being very creative. They have relationships with local CSAs. They have in Santa Barbara the most amazing program where the students are coming in and taking culinary educational classes while they're cooking for their classmates. I mean, that, to me, that is a model that I want to live up to.
Thank you, Dr. Kent. Ms. Burke?
That is a great question, and in fact, given that I have actually worked the food, lunch hour, my sons and daughters' school, many times I've seen the lunches, um, they are making a lot of improvements. It is a bit slow. The one thing is nice is that we've actually talked with Julie at Food Services, who is the person you want to talk to about this, to figure out ways to be creative in what we can do. We actually, the district already has a partnership or a co-op with another group, with the Santa Monica schools. They are getting different food than we are, so we're going to try to figure out how we can make sure to get some of the types of foods they're getting as well and leverage what already exists without creating new roles or positions because we have them here. We have a food services person, we have a food services department. So again, it's part of it's going to be about education, part of it's going to see about how we can get those foods that Samo is getting or other groups are getting and bring them into our district as well.
Thank you, Ms. Burke.
So it is getting a bit late. I know we all have school tomorrow. We want to make our, sure our circadian rhythm is much in check. So the rest of the questions will be 30-second answers, and we have about five left. Um, so next, we have Isaiah Njoku. So you each have 30 seconds to answer.
Uh, hello. Oh, hello. My name is Isaiah Njoku, and, um, my question is, uh, I am the co-president of the club along with Justin Shumpf, the moderator. Uh, and our club purchases pizza during lunch to bring to our club, uh, from an outside source such as Domino's. Um, and so we were just wondering, how can you help us and other clubs to, uh, find or create a, an, um, what's the word? A loophole to the regulation?
What's the regulation? I don't understand.
The regulation is that clubs are not allowed to bring in outside food due to, um, the Childhood Obesity Act, basically. We're not allowed to bring in outside food, basically.
You're during school hours?
Yeah.
That's right.
And the main problem with that is that students come to clubs and it's during lunch, and so they want to make to the club and they're not able to buy lunch, so we still want to be able to provide food at the club.
Especially if it's a short day like Wednesday.
Right. Um, so, was I first?
Yes.
Okay. Um, great que- great question. I didn't, I was not aware of that problem. Um, it would seem to me that, uh, clubs should be able to be given a priority to order lunch from the school itself. If you have a state or, or, uh, federal law that doesn't allow food to come, um, into the campus, you're not going to be able to get it around that on the loophole. But why not have the clubs be able to have an order form where they order lunch to be delivered 100 yards away from, um, where the food is being prepared to those clubs? I think that, uh, we want to encourage students to be in clubs. I'm sorry, it says stop. And that's a great way to make sure those kids can do it without starving.
Thank you, Mr. McPharish. Dr. Kent?
Okay. So if we had students participating in culinary classes, which is my vision as being the sustainability champion on the board, then there would be people cooking things that you guys would want to eat, and you wouldn't feel so motivated to order off of campus. So I think there's a really easy way to solve this problem without having to deal with the federal regulation, and that's just to let's, let's get good food in the schools. Let's make it so you don't, you're not on a mission to order from elsewhere.
Ms. Burke?
Yeah, unfortunately, there are regulations that, uh, bind us with some of the loopholes that you would want us to do. Um, at the same time, you, you might want to eat the food that some of your fellow peers have created in the culinary class, but you might not. Um, so we would have to get creative now, because it sounds like you're meeting now. Culinary classes might not happen for a very long time, about how you can do that. Maybe, like Mr. McPharish said, maybe you, we, we're able to find a different location for your clubs that is permissible so that you can still have food, but still be close to campus. We'd have to look into that.
Thank you, Ms. Burke.
Next, we have Kristin Hovey with a question. The order will be exactly the same.
Hello.
Students often have to wait more than five minutes to use the bathroom, and passing periods are only six minutes long. What will you do to increase student access to this necessity of life?
Well, uh, that is a discussion any school board member would have to have with, uh, the counselors at the high school. It seems like it's, uh, um, an issue of the time. Passing periods, six minutes, that's pretty quick for a campus the size of CCHS. Um, I went to Kennedy High School in LA Unified, and we had passing periods of eight minutes. I thought that's much longer, but it's certainly longer than six. I would, you know, I'm definitely the type of board member who, when I hear concerns like that, I would go to, um, the high school and talk with the counselors, but unfortunately, I don't have an easy fix for it.
Thank you, Mr. McPharish.
Uh, at the board meeting last night, the student representative was complaining about the long line for the bathrooms, and the reason for it was that only one stall was working, and so there were all of these young women waiting to use the bathrooms. So the answer is to fix the bathrooms, right? And so we have the money to do that, and we need to do it right away. And I'd prefer to, in terms of schedule changes, think about a later start time than to make a longer passing time, so let's fix the bathrooms and talk about schedule in terms of circadian rhythms.
Thank you, Dr. Kent. Ms. Burke?
Um, so it sounds like a lot of you are really holding it and just waiting for bathrooms at the schools. Uh, I think it goes back to, again, the type of bathroom we would recreate at the school. So instead of like a separate, uh, men's and women's bathrooms where there's fewer stalls and fewer sinks, we have the open concept where we can actually maximize stalls and get more stalls, and then a central hand washing. Because what you really want really is to go to the bathroom first. Everyone can use an open space to wash their hands. So if we can do that and figure out, create ways to add more stalls, I think that would solve part of that problem.
Thank you, Ms. Burke.
Next, we have a question from Seth DeLee.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Seth. I'm a senior at Culver City High School, and I have a question for you guys. Many students rely on the cafeteria for food. We are being limited to one lunch, which for athletes who have practice or games right after school is just not enough. The offerings are also limited and unappealing. We have been given spoiled milk, wilted lettuce, and greasy pizza too often. What can you do within the law to improve on the food, allow us to eat enough, and vary the menu?
Start with Dr. Kent.
Well, it's my mission to give us better food in the schools, so now my mission is to give us better food and more of it. So let's get the kids involved and get them to tell us what they want, whether or not they want to cook it, and how much of it that they want to make. And it's much easier to handle when you're getting food from local sources. When you're using mass-produced, shipped all the way across the country, high-carbon footprint products, it's really hard to predict and plan and make it correspond to the needs of the students that might change on a daily or weekly basis. So when it's local, we can deal with the need if it changes by seasons, if it changes by participation in the after-school activities, and we can handle that.
Thank you, Dr. Kent. Ms. Burke?
I'm hungry every two hours, so I feel your pain. You've got to be starving too. Um, so that's an interesting question. And I think as a board member, that would be an interesting then for incoming. I will bring that up, and we can talk about that at schools because that would be a new concept, frankly. So as a board member, I would bring that up, and we could talk to Sacramento and our, uh, local Culver City about how to implement a second, a second dinner.
Question for the athletes. Who here has eaten two pizzas in one setting? Like two entire pizzas? That's right. I remember, I used to eat two pizzas. I was an athlete at high school. I played volleyball, and I played, um, cross-country and baseball. I understand what you're saying. I would absolutely, um, uh, work with superintendent to end a ban on kids eating that much food because we need to as athletes. I remember those days. I can't eat two pizzas now, but I certainly could 28 years ago.
How many years ago?
Next, we have a question from Alex Saruti.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Alex Saruti, and I represent the students of Culver City High School, and I have a question. We have teachers who simply do not teach. They sit there and give their students assignments and do nothing. Students know better than anyone else what's happening in our classrooms. Would you consider allowing students to do teacher evaluations?
And we will start with Ms. Burke.
I think student evaluations would be, uh, meaningful for teachers. We can look into that and what kind of questions would be important and have value for teachers, and then also look at what teachers would need to be successful for you guys and create a good partnership, because we want it to be a good partnership. I mean, in their defense right now, they're also teaching in like 100-degree rooms too, so give them a little slack right now, just a little.
Mr. McPharish?
Uh, so there's a concept called 360 evaluations where teachers get, um, evaluated by peers, students, sometimes even, um, parents. I am in favor of 360 evaluations. Just to let you know, the mechanism though, it has to be collectively bargained, meaning the teachers have to agree to it. That means the district would have to want it, and if there is a meeting of the minds on that, I would absolutely support it and I would advocate for it as well.
Dr. Kent?
So, as I said earlier, I've been adjunct faculty for a few years, so I actually do get, uh, student evaluations every semester, and I know what that's like, and, you know, it comes with its pluses and its minuses, and it can be pretty uncomfortable. But the way it works in the college setting is that you sit down with your supervisors, and your supervisors give you the feedback that your students gave. So there is a way that this can take place where it doesn't feel so hot and targeted and judgmental. I think there's room for it. There also needs to be better track record and, you know, a paper trail of a teacher's behavior. One of the issues with dealing administratively with teachers is that we aren't keeping a good paper trail, and I'd like to do a better job of that.
Thank you, Dr. Kent.
Next, we have Yafet Katsela. First, we have Dr. Kent, Ms. Burke, and then, uh, Mr. McPharish. Hi.
Uh, we have serious traffic problems at the Huron-Bradock intersection in the morning and in front of Elrond Con before and after school. So what will you do to make the city respond to these issues before accidents occur and children are hurt?
My response is going to be a sustainability response, which is that I want us to, I want us to do a much better job of encouraging students and their families to bike and walk. And I realize lots of families have to drive to get into Culver City, but we can still drive to get into Culver City and park five blocks away or 10 blocks away and scooter and walk the rest of the way. And that's important for family time, or you could just get dropped off with a walking school bus. It's important for social time, it's important for exercise. There are many ways to get around this without only dealing with the addition of cars. We can also deal with the addition of pedestrians and bicycles.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Burke?
Um, so we have, the district, as you are well aware, we have a walk-and-roll system in the biking and the walking, but I know that that's not- the biking and the walking, but I know that that's not always feasible for all students depending on where they live geographically and what their scheduling is like and parent's schedule is like. So we would need to look at where the log jams are happening. I know that over near my area in Sunkist Park, we had to look at implementing, talking with the city to implement a stop sign and then a flashing red light. So we need to look at getting an assessment there to say, what would help ease the traffic without slowing it down, but also create more safety for the students and the families there.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Mr. McVarysh?
Is City Councilman Jim Clark still here? You're not Jim Clark. Okay, well, it's a partnership between the school district, the school board members specifically, and city councilmen. I'm proud that three of the five... Oh, there's one. I'm so sorry. It's you. Councilwomen as well, that's right. So council members and school board members. I've used my whole entire 30 seconds on that one thing. That's all right. But it's, it's about the partnership. Council, city council members are so responsive to the school district needs, but it's just a matter of the school board members telling them that, and they'll certainly hear that from me, and I think they'll cooperate.
Thank you, Mr. McVarysh.
All right, this will be our last three questions. Next up, we have Flora Namala.
No, no.
Instead of Flora, we will have Eliana Sidin.
The number five bus does not come often enough in the morning resulting in students being tardy.
Oh, can you, is the mic off?
Oh. The number five bus...
There you go.
Does not come often enough in the morning resulting in the students being tardy to or absent from school. What will you do to improve the Culver City bus service that brings many of the high school students to school?
Dr. Kent?
So I have been on the Parks and Recreation Commission with Culver City for a year, which is an important asset because it means I already have relationships with city officials and have some understanding of what the workings of the city look like and budgets and so forth. And our buses are doing some really incredible things like taking tap cards, and they're very green, and they've gotten all sorts of commendations, but there's room for improvement always. And so again, it's about the conversation between the board members and the council members, and as someone who has experience there, I think I would really be able to build that partnership.
Ms. McVarysh?
It is those discussions that's most important. I'm going to guess that the decision-makers on the bus schedules are not, I've not heard from school board members. If they did, and they will, certainly, two of us are going to be elected. I think all three of us would make sure they hear that from them, and then it's just a matter of making sure your voices continue to tell us that. We have to be your advocates in the bus system as well.
Take it away, Ms. Burke.
It sounds like that bus, number five bus or the bus driver also wants the late start time. So then we would need to talk about starting later. But also then, going back to what my other candidate said, to having the discussion to let him know specifically how we can adjust the schedule to get you guys there on time.
All right. Next, we have Edwin. Edwin, to ask a question. First, we have Mr. McVarysh, Ms. Burke, and then Dr. Kent.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Edwin, and my question was, the high school parking lot is plagued with potholes, unclear parking spaces, and flooding when it rains. How can you make this a priority when deciding how to spend any existing or future money the district might have?
How to make that a priority? Is that what you asked for the bond?
Yeah. How can you make it a priority when deciding how to spend any existing or future money?
Right. It's doing exactly what you just did. It's making sure the adults who will be making the decisions hear from the students. If they don't hear that complaint, if they don't realize that it's a problem for people riding their bikes across the lots, for parking, for walking from their car, they're not going to make the change. Hearing from you with your 14 friends who just stood up is what will need to happen in order to make that a priority.
Thank you, Ms. Burke.
Yeah, that's definitely going to be part of the infrastructure planning of the bond money in terms of making that a priority because no one wants to see all that wasted water in the pothole. No one wants to ruin their cars. No one wants to have accidents for those things. So it is part of the process, and we will push it forward when that, the money come in as part of the whole infrastructure modernization.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Dr. Kent?
So we do have monies to spend on these issues, and, and, you know, there are some priorities that come before others, and one is health and safety. And so the question is, are the potholes a safety risk? And it sounds like maybe they are, and that needs to be addressed immediately if so. But there are all these other things we've been talking about all night, like bathrooms that are definitely health and safety and heat, which can be more than uncomfortable. Sometimes it can be a health issue. And so we need to think very carefully as policymakers about what has to come first because where is the health impact? So we'll need to figure out if the potholes are actually causing risks. I don't want to see any concussions.
Thank you, Dr. Kent.
All right. We will have one final question. I want to thank everyone who has asked questions tonight. And this question will be a lightning round, so you will have 15 seconds to answer, and I believe this question will divide the weak from the strong. So, candidates, if you had one superpower, what would it be? I'm going to give it up for anyone who wants to take it.
Telekinesis. Telepathy. I want to be Jean Grey.
So mine is to fly, but it's because I'm afraid of heights, and I'm really interested in challenging myself to be comfortable with the uncomfortable because it's good for perseverance and resilience.
I want to be like Aquaman and talk to the animals. I want to know what the dolphins and the whales and the birds really think about us. So that's mine.
And what will you do to get a Culver City aquarium? That's a joke.
Thank you so much, candidates. You now have 90 seconds to say your final statements. We'll start with Mr. McVarysh and go down the line.
Sure. I brought something. No one asked me a question that I could use this for, but this is a drill. You're going to be hearing a lot of this at your school sites, but more importantly, there are jobs that when you learn how to become a contractor, an engineer, when you learn how to become a welder, your starting salary in Los Angeles is $83,000, $84,000, $85,000. It's the trades. It's the industrial arts and trades. We don't have that as much in our high schools as we used to, certainly when I was younger. I want to bring that back. I want to have an academy for those who want to learn to become welders and electricians, who want to become master plumbers. Ask your parents how much they pay a plumber just to set foot in the house, and you'll understand how incredible these careers are. The smartest man I ever met in my entire life was my grandfather. He was an electrician. He taught at Trade Tech for 15 years, and he taught apprentices. I'd like to be able to bring that type of apprenticeship program to Culver City High School so that kids see this as a viable career. And by the way, when you're in the apprentice program, your salary during the apprentice program is $30 to $37 an hour just to learn this stuff. So these are careers because we are always going to need engineering. Ask SpaceX people, do they need coders or do they need engineers who know how to use this? And they'll tell you they need the engineers.
Thank you, Mr. McVarysh. Dr. Kent?
So I've been talking the talk this whole time about getting students engaged and that that's going to make learning fun, and now I want to walk that talk and encourage you to get engaged and learn about what candidacy for school board looks like by getting service hours to phone bank and walk precincts with me. So I suggest that you go to your guidance office and you say, I want to phone bank for Kelly Kent for school board, and I want to walk precincts for Kelly Kent for school board, because what you'll learn on the ground is that most of the voters know so little about your plights or the great things that are going on in the schools or what the conversations that are at the school board meetings. They just don't know, and we can get the word out, and you can understand what civic involvement needs to look like and how many more people we need to get to vote. So go to your guidance office and work for my campaign.
Mine is also open for awesome students like you.
Mine too.
Mine too.
Thank you, Dr. Kent. Ms. Burke?
So I've heard about people holding it all day long, being very hungry in school, not liking some of the conditions in their classrooms or the teaching styles. So I want to be able to be your champion. I really do. I want to be able to go in and say, and I have the ability, I have the skill set, I have the relationships with the staff and the teachers and the people to say, this is what we need to implement. I have the experience in Sacramento to talk to those people because some of the changes you guys want aren't just going to be in Culver City. They're going to be talking with lawmakers up north in Sacramento too. So I want to be able to give you those conditions you want as part of the bond. I want to be able to help use that money wisely, but to get the conditions of their schools and your learning environments to where they need to be. No one asked me what my favorite pizza is, and I was told I would be asked at this forum. So it is sausage and mushroom, and now you know.
And now I'm hungry.
There you go. See, I have, you didn't stand up for me, though. You too. Okay, great. But we want to be able to, I'm also part of the proposal for these Career Path Academies. We have these academies that, partnerships with people who want to make them happen for you so that if you want to go to college, but if you want to have a trade, if you want to be in technology, in entertainment, we can help provide those for you to maximize your academic experience in Culver City. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burke.
Thank you so much to all the candidates. Yeah, you can clap.
I forgot to say a thank you to Rose Parek and Maran Neufeld, who are amazing. They made all of this wonderful stuff look so good. Yeah, thank you. And also, please pick up your trash and your bottles, and we don't want to leave anything here, or you'll get detention. And thank you to the moderators and the timer.
Hey, shout out to Ms. GR.
Remind your parents to vote in the next school board election.